For December 12, 2016 to order. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience that wishes to video or audio tape must notify the chairman now. Hearing no one, will you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcement.
Hi. Peggy Rose, on behalf of the Voter Information Committee. When we were here in October, we mentioned that one of the things we'd like to do for the upcoming year was a volunteer committee fair. Well, we have set the date for that. We've got a room at the community center for Saturday, January 28, from 10 to noon. We will need some help from you folks getting the word out to the committee chairs that we're doing this. And we've got some email addresses. We need more from the chair, for the chairs, so we can get the word out. Is there any committees that you folks are particularly concerned with? That I noticed, you know, you used to have the committee vacancies in the packet. I haven't seen them in a couple of meetings. I don't know if you, you know, if you still are going to do that. It would be helpful to us, you know, if you would. So, that said, I think that's about it. As I said, we need some help with getting the word out to the committee chairs, and we'll be ready to go.
Great. Can you drop that date off in the front office?
Sure.
And we do have an updated vacancy list. It was in the packet last week, but there'll be a new one.
Okay.
That you can get tomorrow morning.
Terrific.
Great.
Sandy should have the list of addresses for all the committee chairs.
Okay. Okay.
And committee members.
Great. And I hope it will be a good day, no snow, no cold, and nobody won't have any excuse for not coming.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Onto consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we move to approve the consent agenda. Sorry. I did that last week, I think, too. A, approve the 2017 annual liquor license renewals. B, approve the 2017 annual general license renewals for auto licenses, common victuals, without entertainment, inns, and lodging houses. Authorize the chair to sign a letter to Representative Peak and Senator-elect Seer regarding petition for increase of senior exemptions. Special legislation approved at the May 2016 town meeting. D, approve application for road race for Cape Cod Athletic Club for January 15, 2017. E, approve the application for road race for Cape Cod getaway MS bike ride for June 25, 2017. F, approve the application for road race for Ragnar, Cape Cod for May 12, 13, 12th and 13, 2017. G, approve the appointment of Al Donahue as an alternate member of the ZBA as recommended. H, we're holding off on. I, approve amendment to the contract for White House field fencing to move the completion date from December to April 1, 2017.
Second.
Okay. Just note that on H, the approval of the appointment of Joan McCarty as a full member of the Historic District Commission is being held because we're not sure that the two alternates weren't offered the position before we appoint another one. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Onto public hearings and presentations. Tonight, we have the annual meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Sacquetucket Development Committee, as well as Waterways Committee. We'll start with Sacquetucket Development Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Merry Christmas. I'm Matt Hart. I'm the chairman of both the Sacquetucket Development Committee and the Waterways Committee. The Sacquetucket Development Committee meetings have been enthusiastically attended and documentations discussed with the general public resulting in the recommended design concepts of the Sacquetucket Landside that were presented and approved in 2015 by the Board of Selectmen and at town meeting. As a result, the town has contracted with Brown, Lindquist, Fenachio, and Reber to perform the architectural and engineering services for the landside renovation that include the new Harbor Master Department office building, cafe restaurant, the boardwalk, maintenance building, and consolidated ticket and landscaping, you know, ticket office. An $187,500 state coastal zone management grant, thanks to Amian, in the Conservation Department was received to help fund the engineering design cost of this project. Design plans are underway, and the Sacquetucket Development Committee anticipates the recommended design will be presented to the Board of Selectmen, general public, and 2017 town meeting for approval and funding with the objective of beginning the landside construction during the summer of 2017. In addition, the proposed design of the Sacquetucket Development Committee has discussed important areas beyond the basic landscape design for sidewalks, crosswalks, handicap access, landscaping, and potential public uses of the property, including seasonal areas for vehicle, parking, arts and craft, and winter boat storage. I'd like to add that a reminder, the Sacquetucket Development Committee last year was extended for one year, and that committee expires as of December 31 of this year unless we're reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions, Angela? Comments?
No.
Peter?
Just quickly on the, refresh my memory, but decor engineers are still looking at the stuff in the harbor, right?
Going to cover that next.
Okay. But I guess my question is, if that gets delayed, what impact that might have or potentially have on the landside? How that will work together timing-wise?
I don't think so, Peter. John's here, but as it happens, the way that we're talking about potentially doing this, the design working on it, the two things complement each other. And we hope that we can go ahead, that one won't slow down the other. So, I don't see a conflict or a problem. I see that it would be, work very well to go ahead. I don't want to get into details about that. Obviously, John will, and will also have the design people tell you why they want to do that, but I don't see a problem.
Okay. And you see a one construction season or one off-season to get the construction done for the landside, not the harbor side, but the landside?
That's what we anticipate, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, Matt Hart again for the Waterways Committee report.
Once again, I'm Matt Hart. Merry Christmas.
Oh, and Happy New Year. Can you throw that in there, too?
I was just thinking about this. I think this is my 19th year. I hope I can get it right this year. The town of Howard, Howard Waterways Committee has had an interesting and successful year of progress, thanks to the efforts of the Howard residents, the Harbor Master Department, now to Resource Department, and the Waterways Committee, with one unexpected potential obstacle from the Army Corps of Engineers for 2016. The Waterways Committee has worked closely and successfully with the boaters, residents, Board of Selectmen, and the Harbor Master Department. The meetings have been well-attended, and the members' attendance and participation has been commendable. Projects. Sacquetucket Marina, Municipal Marina. At the last annual town meeting, the voters unanimously approved a $7 million project to replace the Sacquetucket Municipal Marina docks, piles, and services. The project also includes dredging of approximately 12,500 cubic yards of material from the harbor, which has accumulated over the last 35 or 40 years. This marina upgrade would include a handicapped accessible ramp system that would bring the new marina in compliance with the American Disability Act. In addition, a $1 million Seaport Economic Council grant was received to help fund the reconstruction, specifically the east dock section that includes the handicapped accessible ramp system for the passenger boats and the commercial fishing boats. It would also provide access to the recreational boats. This marina replacement project will be funded over a 20-year term with approximately 75% of the debt service paid for by harbor revenues. The marina replacement engineering design is complete, but we are experiencing delays receiving required permits from the Army Corps of Engineers. As a result, the project has been delayed for one year. Budget. The Harbor Master Department again exceeded previous year's revenue without any rate increases. The department collected $1,035,000, yeah, $1,003,505,900. There. In the fiscal year 2016. Public safety. This past boating season, the Harbor Master Department responded to 51 maritime assistant cases, 25 boat toes, five groundings, five boat dewatering, six persons in the water, and 10 were miscellaneous. Facility upgrades. Number one, install new public restroom and tight tank at Allen Harbor. Two, regraded and repaved Allen Harbor parking lot with a pervious payment and filtration system for the storm drain. Three, install the new lifting davit and winch system at Witchmere Town Pier for the commercial fishing fleet to load and unload their boats. Install new public restroom at Witchmere Pier. With the assistance of the Facilities Department, made major repairs to the town's shellfish lab, replaced the roof, floor, and added support beams and pilings to stabilize the building. Dredging. Approximately 5,100 cubic yards of material dredged from Allen Harbor Channel. The beach nourishment material was placed at Earl Road and Gray Neck Road, public beaches. Sacquetucket Channel and Allen Harbor Channel are scheduled for dredging again for the spring of 2017. Harbor management plan. These changes were approved by the Board of Selectmen. Mooring regulations, designation of commercial fishing vessel moorings, established a special purpose mooring for Stone Island Yacht Club, and the new winter boat, winter boat storage rates. The artificial reef. The deployment by barge of approximately 1,600 cubic yards of concrete that was left over from the demolition of the Howard High School was used to construct an artificial reef 2.8 miles south of Sacquetucket and into the channel. Mass Division of Marine Fisheries funded the $146,000 project from recreational saltwater fish permits. Respectfully submitted, Matt Hart. You have any questions?
Thank you, Matt. Angela? Comments? Julie?
No.
Peter?
You have the good word. Thank you.
Great job, Matt, and great job, John, and your team.
Thank you.
Back up. I'm going to have public comment and announcement. Richard, did you have anything? I saw you come in. I wasn't sure if you had something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was here for your consent agenda on the legislation for the expansion of the senior tax credit. I just wanted to be here if there were any questions, and just an FYI for you, while I have been in touch with Representative Peak's office, they're aware of it coming, and we're going to probably wait for, hopefully, January for the new incoming state senator to introduce that into the Senate.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, back onto public hearings and presentations. We're going to reopen the public hearing for the adoption of the noise bylaw standard for entertainment licensing and adoption of uniform hours of entertainment for Howard Port. Chris?
Do you have to read the notice or anything? So, in terms of, thank you, Mr. Chairman, in terms of where we are with this, there's been a, two occasions in which we've had fairly lengthy discussion. I think in the most recent memo, which we did distribute out to the various entertainment license holders, as well as the Chamber of Commerce and the Police Department, I think from the last board meeting, I think I've captured the essence of what the board's looking to do at this point. I might just kind of read through this, because it's pretty short. An inside entertainment every day until 11:00 p.m. or until liquor closing, whichever is later, start times per request of the applicant. No entertainment at the license premise may be conducted in a manner such that the noise from the entertainment is creating a nuisance and can be heard outside the boundaries of the premises. Item B, outside entertainment every day until 10:00 p.m., start times per the request of the applicant. The standard would be reasonable sound levels, which is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet from boundary line or source of sound amplification system, whichever is further, along with consider expanding above to all establishment, all establishments entertainment. The concept, because we initially posted this as entertainment licenses in the Howard Port area, it would be my recommendation that we go back and amend the liquor license regulations at a different meeting to be held probably in January and to replace the above with that. And then if at that time the board wanted to consider doing all entertainment licenses, they could certainly do it at that point. Or if you wanted to do a trial, then just do the Howard Port for one year coming up and then seek in the next year, license year, calendar year, to have those. If, for some reason, the board doesn't come to a final resolution, I guess we have already printed the license or have the licenses ready to be printed with the old regulations on there, so we would maintain the status quo if no action is taken by the board this evening. I think that's probably a pretty good overview as to where we are, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Comments? Angelo?
I just have a question, because I don't understand one of the sentences in B. I'm not complaining about what I think you mean, but I find it very difficult to understand. The standard would be reasonable sound levels, and which is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet from the boundary. Does this mean that you have to hear the noise after 150 feet of the boundary? Because that's what it says.
Yes. It has to be plainly audible beyond 150 feet from the boundary line.
Or the source of amplification.
Or the source of amplification.
Whichever is further.
So, what this means is now I can crank up my speaker as loud as I want to, so I can have the sound past 150 feet, because that's what it says here, "past." So, I can have it say 1,000 feet if I have a big enough speaker.
Well, I think there's two things to that, and what we, one of the things that we had a discussion about with the police. We did put in there, the standard would be reasonable sound levels, so that gets to the general volume, if you would, within 150 feet. And then we use the word "and," which is plainly audible at 150 feet. So, there's really two standards in that. So, if someone had it blaring loud, that loud, beyond 150 feet, then the police would be able to go in and do a request to have them turn it down.
I understand that, and I support that, but that's not what this says.
There's a word missing.
There's a word. There's language, there's language missing.
It's true. I agree.
I'm not trying to argue with what you're trying to do. I'm just telling you that it doesn't say that.
It's not worded.
It says you can have sound as far as you want.
Chief.
Mr. Chairman, this is a legalese thing. It's a simple fix. If you just add the word "not,"
Right.
After "is." Not plainly audible, that would be the same wording as the noise, anti-noise bylaw.
Thank you.
And while I'm up here, if I may, I missed the last meeting. I had another obligation, but I think we were close last time. I did, I do know that the deputy did express concern, and I wish to express it again, of this line that says on the Section A, entertainment until 11:00 p.m. or until liquor closing, which is ever later. I disagree with allowing entertainment to run right up until closing time of the establishment. All people have to be off, out of the establishment by 1:00 a.m. If you, you know, allow that, it's, again, I think, setting someone up for failure, because all we have to do is show up at 1:05, and if there's still people in the building, they're in violation. That, along with the very practical public safety reason of it just allows for a cooling down period in order to get everybody out of the building. We've had establishments, in the short time I've been here, be out of control because of a lack of attention to this, being able to control the band and the people in the establishment. So, I'm just concerned about that, and I want to make sure you're aware of that.
And your recommendation, chief, was for a half an hour cooling down period for those entertain-
At least. I would like to see midnight, myself. I mean, you don't have, are there any liquor licenses out there now that have a, they're all basically 1:00 a.m., aren't they? Or, so, this would, this would run entertainment to 1:00 a.m., and I strongly disagree with that. Because we really, that would be introducing something new, right? We don't, we haven't had any entertainment licenses run till 1:00 a.m. if we enacted this.
Excuse me. This is inside entertainment, and the folks who were here last time, it was more the concept of playing a radio than it was anything else.
Okay.
What we heard, but we also heard, we also heard from the deputy that this concept of a 30-minute cooldown before, you know, before the place shuts down, and that's not in here at the moment.
Yeah. I agree. If you wanted to add wording about just amplified music, that's one thing, but live bands, if you don't deline, you know, put a difference in there, then that would allow a live band until 1:00 a.m., which I would be concerned about.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Anything else, Angelo? Julie?
I just have a question on that. I understand the reasoning behind a cooling down period, and I certainly can support that. My only question is, how do we, how are you able to enforce that? How do you know? And that's my only thing, is that, you know, do you know that a band is at a place just by the fact that the license, like, there's some sort of permit or anything that they have to get? So, in other words, if a place is having a band, and let's just say the liquor license goes till midnight.
Right.
So, that would mean you'd like the band to stop by 11:30, right?
11.
11?
He'd like 11. He'd like an hour.
Oh, an hour?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was a half hour.
Well, an hour before closing. What I'm concerned with is this would allow live music up until closing time.
Yeah. No, and I understand what you're saying.
So, like that, that just would seem like people are going to be wanting to stay there and listen to the music right up till-
Till, right. Till they, right. Till there's no longer-
Right.
Yeah.
And the first part of your question, it's up to the people of the liquor establishment to, you know, control-
Right. No, I understand that.
The band and the people in the establishment. There's other wording in the regulations that also-
That it falls to them.
Right.
And I'm just wondering, you know, other than, so, let's just say they don't abide by it.
Mm-hmm.
So, ultimately, they're responsible if something, you know, were to happen or whatever, but, I mean, how do, how do you know that they're not abiding by it unless there's a complaint? Is that, that the only way you'd know?
Right. If we, if there's a complaint, or if we're called for, like, a disturbance in the establishment at, like, 1:05, that's a problem.
Right. No, and I understand what you're saying.
We show up, and the band is still playing at 1:15.
Right. Okay. No, I just was looking for clarification. I didn't know if there was a way that, you know, you went around and to check it or whatever, so.
Yes, we, they do monitor them, too.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Our midnight eight officers are on top of it. They do an excellent job.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter?
Chief, just while you're there, last week, I believe Deputy Gagnon was advocating for the half an hour cooldown, wind down, whatever you want to call it. Have you had a discussion with him? Is, you know, is it just, is the one hour your thing? Are you guys concluded the one hour is a good thing?
Well, I gave it a lot of thought, and I, I think an hour is reasonable. A half hour, I think you're bumping up against the same thing as allowing it right up till closing. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
We didn't have in-depth discussion on it. We do agree we need to have, they need, there should be some kind of buffer there to allow the establishment to, to, you know-
Okay.
Shut the band down.
So, if this read for the inside entertainment, every day until 11:00 p.m. or until 60 minutes prior to liquor closing, whichever is later, would you be okay with that?
Yes. Because liquor closing across the board is 1:00, correct?
Right.
Could be whichever's earlier. Yeah, earlier.
It's whichever.
Later.
Whichever's later. Whichever you want.
Whichever's later, because then you'd still have the 11:30 or 12:30, whatever.
You've had, you've had entertainment license, you do have entertainment licenses out till 12 a.m.
So, can I ask one other?
Go ahead.
So, we're, when we're saying the hour cooling down period, this is for, just to clarify, this is for establishments with an entertainment license that are also serving alcohol.
Correct.
Right? We're not talking about any kind of, yeah, cooling down period for something where they have a band going.
No.
Yeah. All right. I just want to be clear. Okay.
So, would you be all right then?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's a data point for me.
Thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, I guess the other one is, on the outside entertainment, I would, in the last sentence after the word "further," I'd just put a period and just say, along with considering expanding to all other establishments, entertainment. We're not doing that, as I understand it right now. The hearing was advertised at only along the 28 corridor in Howard Port, so that's what we're focusing on solving, or trying to solve at the moment.
Correct.
Thank you. Comments from anyone in the public?
Hello. Good evening. Taylor Powell, Perks. I work at Perks. I built Perks. I am Perks. I'm more concerned with B, but also, you know, a lot of businesses, I think, should be here. I flew up from Florida to be here, so tried to be here last week. My plane got derailed, basically, and I missed it. So, very happy to be here, and I appreciate your time. On B, considering, you know, we're after this small slice of pizza and basically a bite of this pizza, going for a season, running a seasonal business, I was wondering if the board would consider extending that outside music just on Friday and Saturdays only, Friday and Saturday only, and only for when it gets busy, when all these vacationers come. A lot of people come in from Boston, takes them a long time to fight that traffic. A lot of people don't even go out till 10:00 o'clock, maybe 11:00 o'clock on Friday and Saturday, which was originally proposed by the town administrator on the first hearing. I counted, that's only 17 days in the summer. So, it'd be just July and August, and then that Friday, Saturday's over, and then 10:00 p.m. throughout the year, and the quiet time in June, and all those other months. Just thought I'd throw it out there and see if the board would consider it. So, it's basically a question, if it's, if it's a possibility. The town is bustling. We are drawing people in. The town's better than ever, in my opinion, from what I've seen. So, that was one thing I'd like to share, if you guys want to think about that, because I think it would really help all the businesses in town. Another thing I had some concerns with, and I'm really glad the chief's here, because maybe he can help answer some, some questions and concerns of mine, is, you know, I did a lot of research on this, and, you know, you guys have done a great job going back and forth, and this has really gone a long way, so, you know, we, like everyone's saying, you guys are there, we're close, and I like the direction it's going, but, you know, as a business owner, you know, I looked at some law forms and, and some things like that, and a lot of people talked about reasonable sound levels and plainly audible being subjective and vague. I understand that the town does not want to go into despot meters, and there's some history of that. I can, I can respect that. However, you know, if a form of punishment is out there, I mean, how do you, how do you gauge it if one person's opinion is different than the next? So, if I'm an officer, and so-and-so is an officer, and I go all these different nights, and what I think's not plainly audible, and he thinks it is, or maybe we're going a lot, and now we're just fed up with it, so we're going to issue a citation. So, one thing I liked for all the businesses, which I think is the right direction, was, you know, we don't want to really get these businesses in trouble or go after people that I want to know, it's not written in the language that you guys are proposing, but it was mentioned last week, and I'm sure maybe the chief saw the hearing last week, or I watched it on YouTube, that if it was whatever business, that there, there is a complaint, that the officer would go and address the manager or owner or whoever, and give them the opportunity to comply. And if they didn't comply, I understand there's a violation, but I, you know, is there, like, that kind of understanding or grace period, you know, in this, in these licenses? I mean, that's kind of another question, in a sense, too. Basically, I've been doing this for over seven years, and I just want to play by the book and, and help contribute to the town, just like I have, and I don't want to break any rules. I want to make sure the rules are clear. wanna make sure the rules are clear. You know, I, I don't wanna offend my neighbors. I never have. I never will. But, um, think if we put on street signs plainly speeding or clearly speeding, and people start calling, it's gonna open up a can of worms, if you will. So, sorry to mention that if that goes the wrong way, but I think it's something that we need to kind of address here, if that's an issue. I mean, if you have facts, you can base it on facts, but if it's, um, subjective and vague, it's gonna be just the officer's word versus, and, and on that point, um, you know, I really respect law enforcement, not only here in, in Harwich, but also my other home in Florida. You know, I really think it's unfair for, for these guys. They're, they're here to protect and serve, and they're chasing around noise violations all summer. There's no, nothing out there to, like, the boy that cried wolf or something to, to really go out. I mean, some people just call just 'cause they're annoyed, or they wanna, they don't like, you know, they wanna bother a business or something, and, and I, I don't know how to regulate that, but God forbid, they, they could be, you know, helping us or solving, doing something or preventing something from happening, and they're chasing something that's not even there, and it's really unfair to everybody in the public and the officers, and maybe in victims that could be in a crime or something. So, you know, we've gotta think about that, too, and this whole thing, that if someone calls every night, I mean, where are those calls coming from? Who's recording this? Why, why isn't this being addressed?
Okay.
You know? Um, so I, I do like where we're going. Um, I just, you know, those were my concerns. Uh, another concern I have, which is really based on facts, is all the businesses on that south side of that corridor, I am a big-time fisherman, so I follow wind and speed and direction of wind. It's a fact, the wind blows out of the south and southeast every summer. It's not until about the fall in September, it switches to the north, northeast. So that wind is gonna carry sound. Sound's gonna travel from the south on those side, on all those businesses on that side of the street. So if some, if an officer's called to some of these establishments on that south side of the street, is that gonna be taken into consideration that, okay, I'm walking into the sound, 'cause it's carrying towards my body, that I'm at a hundred and fifty feet, but, you know, it, it, I even looked in Boston, try to look at some of these laws, they have tall buildings that kinda ample, you know, muffle the sound. We have all these low buildings, sound travels. Um, I just don't want any business to be set up for, for, um, something that they're not trying to do, a violation, especially my business myself. I wanna comply. I want this to be right. I, I wanna keep on going. I love this town more than I could ever tell you guys, but, uh, you know, maybe, um, you guys can clear some of that up and, and consider that, you know, uh, the seasonal vacationers and travelers that come here are what support these people in this town, and they wanna go out. I mean, if a renter comes in, he's, they're unpacking their family, they're going to dinner, doing everything, they're probably not going out till ten. Same thing on Friday. Boston traffic's ridiculous to get here on a Friday. So I just thought that, you know, June is slow, keep it slow. After July Fourth weekend, this town is what it is, maybe eleven PM, 'cause it was originally suggested, ain't such a bad idea.
Okay. Thank you, Taylor. I'll, I'll see if I can get your answers to those questions. Comments from the board on the proposed eleven o'clock closing for Friday and Saturday? Peter, any thoughts on?
Well, can we first ask the chief, if I could?
Sure.
Chief, how many noise complaints do we have last year? Do you know roughly?
No, I didn't bring those numbers with me as far as noise complaints. However, in a, we, there were several, um, at that one particular establishment, which is what led to all of this.
That's, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing is, I, I think it was a misstatement, because I don't think in Harwich, you guys are spending ten percent of the time chasing noise complaints. Like, there aren't that many noise complaints, quite frankly, I think.
Right. If you, if you look at the big picture, it's just part of, of summer life, and, you know, disturbances and noise, but, um, it's not the majority of what we're, we're dealing with. And, um, just, you know, I, I appreciate Taylor's comments. I, I underst, I feel his pain, and his comment about not wanting to be set up, that's why we're here. I, I noticed this issue, you know, when we were responding to the complaints, that noise not to exceed the premises for outside entertainment is exactly that. So I think anything we can come to that's beyond that is, uh, gonna benefit, uh, perks in other outside entertainment, but you also have to consider reasonableness, you know? And the, the question about the, uh, you know, can the officer give a warning? Of course the officer can give a warning. They almost, I don't think there was an instance that I'm aware of, that it was, uh, not, uh, done as, as an initial warning, but if we start going there multiple times, that's when it, it becomes a, a, a problem. So if you, you know, want to consider putting language in that first response would result in a warning, and anything thereafter is, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that. That's pretty much standard discretion on part of patrol officers. I think we, we have an excellent department of reasonable officers who are not out to, to try and do anybody in. They're just trying to, uh, do their job appropriately.
Just to touch on that, Chief, there was at that particular location, there was nine complaints. It was three that were found. The rest were not found, and that's when we got it, and that's when this process started. So-
Right.
Certainly there were warnings and driveaways when the police got there and didn't determine that there was a noise violation.
Sure.
Correct? Okay. Um, Angelo?
I'm not sure how many people were doing outside entertainment at the beginning of last summer. Uh, so nine may be a, a big number, but, uh, you know, uh, the Embers didn't start doing that, I don't believe, until later on in the summer, almost to September, I think. Uh, so I think what you have was one or two establishments at the most, because the hot, the hot stove actually moved everything inside, because they used to get a lot of complaints. So I, I, I think that last summer may have been a quiet time, is what I'm trying to say.
Julie?
No, I, you know, I mentioned the eleven o'clock last week, too, just out of curiosity to see what the businesses were asking for. I had asked that to Jeremy. Um, I mean, I, I don't know, how do you feel about eleven o'clock on a, a Friday and Saturday, July and August only, right?
Or outside entertainment, we're talking about outside entertainment. One of the, one of my primary concerns with that is, we really are not addressing the, um, some of the people that spoke earlier at the public hearings, that may be inside that hundred and fifty-foot zone. Um, you know, I mean, they're what, they're entitled to a certain level of peace and quiet and reasonable noise level, or at least a reasonable cutoff time.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I don't claim to have all the answers. Um, you know, uh, I personally think ten o'clock is reasonable for outdoor entertainment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Peter, any follow-up on that one, when that's up there?
No, I think we should move forward with what we got, but you gotta keep the hearing going.
Okay, the last, last, uh, question was, could you just briefly explain the process? If somebody calls in a noise complaint, just to answer Taylor's other question, on how you guys respond, what you, the protocol, basically, from the time of the call?
Process is, the entertainment license exists now, or hopefully in the future?
Hopefully in the future.
So if, if the hundred, uh, not plainly audible standard was put into effect for future entertainment licenses, and we had, uh, a complaint from a resident or a, uh, another business owner somewhere about excessive noise from a licensed establishment, the officer would respond and judge the hundred and fifty-foot distance, um, which they're pretty good at, because it's part of the bylaw right now, and shut down and listen. And then it becomes a judgment call, like Taylor said. Off, absolutely, there's no question that's the case. Everybody may, everybody's standard may be a little different as to what is plainly audible, but that is the language that's in the bylaw, and I don't think it's unreasonable to include it in, in this either. So they would listen, and if it's, if they determine that it is clearly plainly audible at a distance of a hundred and fifty feet, they would go and contact the establishment and tell them it's too loud. Now, as part of their options, there, there are two different enforcement options that go along with that. One is, the wording in the current by, noise bylaw says a licensed establishment that violates their provisions of their entertainment license, okay, therefore also violates the town bylaw. So I think it would be a hundred and fifty, they could write out immediately if they wanted to, a hundred and fifty-dollar citation, bylaw citation. Second offense, I think, and thereafter would be three hundred. Or they can document it and bring it to the attention of the, of the chain of command as a, as something that would either be brought before the board, or caution them in saying, this is one, you know what I mean? We've had establishments with obviously three strikes. So it would depend on past history with the establishment as to, you can obviously, we could take one violation before the board, but it would usually be several documented violations. We would, um, you know, submit a memo, as we did last, uh, summer, and then the process would start with the establishment. It would be called in and, and, uh, informed and entitled to a hearing and the whole nine yards.
Great.
So those are the two different enforcement options that we would have, and how it would occur.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Anything else from the public? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We just closed the public hearing, sorry. Uh, Peter, do you have a, do you have a motion on this? Do you wanna take it?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, um, we adopt the following, um, standard regarding entertainment licenses along Route twenty-eight in Harwich Port. Now, it'll be inside entertainment every day until 11:00 PM, or until sixty minutes prior to liquor closing, whichever is later. Start times per request of the applicant. No entertainment at the licensed premises may be conducted in a manner such that the noise from the entertainment is creating a nuisance and can be heard outside the boundaries of the premises. B on outside entertainment every day until 10:00 PM. Start times per request of the applicant. The standard will be reasonable sound levels, and which are not plainly audible at a distance of a hundred and fifty feet from the boundary line, or source of sound amplification system, whichever is further.
Thank you, Peter. Any second on that?
I'd second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded.
Just for a clarification, um, when you read it, Peter, you didn't say, "and also selling liquor." Did you mean to include that?
Yes. Has liquor licenses, yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I, I think that we're gonna run into a lot of difficulties with this outside entertainment and a lot of complaints, and because most of the people who live in those areas, right, are not here right now, so you don't have a whole audience. So I, I would think that this board has to understand that we're gonna test something, see what happens, and if we have to change it, we, we will, because, uh, I've been through it once before, several years ago, and it's, it's not a lot of fun.
Thank you, Angelo. Julie?
Uh, no, I, you know, I, I think that to your comment, Angelo, we are gonna have to test it and see how it goes, and we also have to, you know, be cognizant of the zoning of where these businesses are. And we're, we're talking really about two months of people trying to make a living and keep our town vibrant, so I think we have to take that into consideration, too. I know, I know it's probably gonna get difficult, but I, I think we can't lose sight of that either.
Okay. Any comments, Peter?
I would just say, when a complaint comes in and the police come down, I think the police are, every time, I know, but, you know, very professional about it and cordial and whatnot, and at the, uh, the establishment responds to that-
Right.
And takes some action to reduce the noise, because someone is complaining, then I think everything will work out. I won't say just wonderful, but it will be a lot better. If they don't, then they may find themselves in front of us, and, um, you know, their license is in jeopardy, so that's our responsibility at that point in time.
Okay.
At least now, we're laying out where we think the rules are.
Yep.
Chris, do you have anything to add? It's been moved and seconded to, um, adopt the standard to include entertainment license along Route twenty-eight. Um, Peter, do we wanna reread it for the record, or, we don't have to?
You don't need to.
As presented by Peter. It will be in the minutes as well.
As motion and seconded.
As motion and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you all for your patience with that. Moving on. Uh, seven-year capital plan, joint meeting with the finance committee. Finance committee, wanna join us at the table?
For seven years?
What is it?
See if my mic reaches over.
Good evening to the finance committee.
If you want that one, too. Chair, the finance chair will know we have a quorum. I call this meeting to order.
Great.
I'd like-
You can use this one.
I'd like to, uh, let you know who's here. We have Mark Amaris, Mark, Larry Ballantyne, way back over there, John Chori, Dana DiCosta, and Ed McManus. Not here are Noreen Doniou, Lori Gillespie Lee, and, uh, Prince Arum's walked in. So he's here, too, somewhere.
He's at the table.
There he is. Right in front.
Excellent. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think probably the best way to, uh, handle this is, I'll just go through the, um, the different items by, uh, department. I will focus, it is obviously a, a seven-year plan. I will just focus on those items that are recommended for funding. I, I think the town administrator and the capital outlay committee were, uh, in a hundred percent in sync, so, uh, going through this, uh, as I say what the recommendation is, uh, certainly Rich is here, so he can speak for capital outlay, but I, I'll go through, uh, and just highlight those ones, but just so people are aware that we have a, a uniformity of approach. I will just designate, too, uh, part of the, uh, plan is just the, um, the, the initial preliminary funding source for the, the different items. So with that in mind, uh, the first, and these are done alphabetically under the community center, uh, they have a request for fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars for gym floor resurface. Uh, that is proposed to be funded through free cash. The next item is the basement construction of a public records, uh, storage vault, uh, I'm sorry, public records, record storage area. Uh, this is a request that is into CPC for sixty-two thousand, uh, zero twenty-eight. Uh, that, I think what the capital outlay did was, if CPC votes to fund it, then they would acknowledge that and, and support that at, at town meeting, I think is the way that that's constructed. Uh, one of the things, too, I'm gonna avoid, under, formally under the capital plan, any item under fifty thousand dollars does not have to be referenced. I do reference them in my documents, because I have to pay, somehow I have to come up with a funding plan to pay for it, so I will, uh, at least under this exercise, uh, avoid those items. The next, uh, area that we get into is on, uh, fire. This is a, a fire category. I did ask the fire department if they would coordinate, uh, the public radios, uh, for a town-wide radio system. So the, the funding request, this is over two years, but the first year, uh, which would be to buy a base station and, uh, some preliminary radios, uh, would be a hundred and two thousand, six hundred and forty-three from free cash, and then thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty from Water Enterprise. Uh, so we have coordinated that with the, uh, water department. Uh, this would be kind of a, uh, an initial, a town-wide radio system that could be used as, as kind of a backup in, in cases of emergency, with the idea that it would expand to police and fire, uh, as their backup, uh, system at a later date. Uh, their overall system is slotted for twenty-twenty-one, just the reason for that. Uh, a pumper truck replacement schedule, uh, they have a pumper truck that needs to be replaced, four hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, that is recommended as a capital exclusion. Uh, automatic chest compression, uh, it's, the total request is sixty-two thousand. Uh, last year at town meeting, we did appropriate, uh, ten percent, or fifty-nine, a hundred dollars already. Uh, so the grant, we anticipate that be funded by grant money of, uh, fifty-six thousand. Uh, so we are anticipating a grant on, on that topic. The next item is the, uh, Station Two building upgrade. Uh, planning and design is estimated at three hundred and ten. Uh, because this would have a follow-on request, uh, multi-million dollar, uh, follow-on request, uh, the initial of application here, or the initial funding, would be for planning and design of three hundred and ten. Uh, that would be funded through debt exclusion. If you've noticed in the time that I've been here, I think if you're gonna have not just a three hundred and ten thousand dollar request, but essentially, potentially, a four million dollar request, I think the voters, you know, really need to know that they're not just signing up for three hundred and ten, they're also signing up, or at least knowing that, a, a bigger item is coming. So in this case, a, a placeholder is four million dollars. That would be Station Two, Fire Station Two building upgrade, uh, that needs to be, uh, completed. On the, uh, golf course, that's next, golf operations and maintenance, infrastructure improvements. Uh, this is to, uh, the, the parking lot, the construction of a cart barn, uh, maintenance shed, uh, the, where the, um, facility maintenance, not facility, where the golf maintenance folks operate. That is a total of one point two million dollars. That would be done as a debt exclusion, but similar to how we handled that for, uh, Sacotucket Harbor, it is anticipated that ninety percent of the proceeds of the paying off of that debt would come from, uh, golf fees, and they have established those fees already and have already- And they have established those fees already and have already commenced collecting them. On the, under the Harbor Master, the Sacotucket has already been alluded to tonight. The waterside is, has been funded as a debt exclusion. We just wait for that project to go forward. But the land side, we had funded last year, the design element. And now this year, the estimate is $3 million. That would be funded by debt exclusion. We do hope to realize a certain portion of that, potentially through fees, also by the sale of the Harbor Master shop on Bank Street. I do have a request that is going before Real Estate and Open Space to consider the property for disposition and sale. Once Real Estate and Open Space discusses that on Friday, if they agree with that recommendation, that would come back to the Selectment for a request for an appraisal. The Harbor Master has done an outstanding job in terms of managing some of these projects. And we have identified, he has a project to do Round Cove ramp replacement and some bulkhead work at Round Cove. There is sufficient funds from other articles that are left over. This money, we did identify that it was funded through free cash, so we can reallocate it. But that would be $200,000 to do improvements to the ramps. The library, as we've had a fairly extensive discussion, on the generator that is in there. Just new information, I think after the Capital Outlay meeting the next morning, I had a meeting and I had asked Capital Outlay to increase that up to 150. I think it is gonna be closer to 110. We finally got an estimated number came in. So it's closer to 110. That would be funded from free cash under the proposal. Planning. Under the Police Department, Police Department does have several requests. The one that is over, the $50,000 threshold, $153,789, is for the replacement of the security system. These are the FOBs to allow the officers to enter and exit the facility, as well as some renovation, I think, to the cameras. On the, under Public Works, the five-year road maintenance program. We have historically targeted about $1.4 million to put towards road maintenance. In this year's allocation, we have, $700,000 comes from Chapter 90 funds. So we would be seeking $700,000. I know each of the years that I've been here, we have put in a request. That money has ranged, 700 is more the normal target, if you would. And we've had a couple of years in which Chapter 90 has been higher, so that number's been a little bit lower. And then the other component to that, which we would add in on the five-year road maintenance, and one of the main charges for clarity and transparency, that the West Harwich Route 28 design, we would need to pay for the design work. So there would be two years in a row to fund at $150,000. So that would be included in that, so the total for roadway work throughout the community and specifically for design on West Harwich is 150. So 150 and 7 would be $850,000. The good news on that is if that does, if the design money goes and the design is accepted under the Transportation Improvement Program, a federally funded program, then the estimated 3.5 million, that's a very preliminary estimate, 3.5 million would be funded by federal funds and not by local taxpayer funds. And the DPW also has, or Public Works also has, replacement of a Volvo loader. That would be funded through free cash at $200,000. A MSW, municipal solid waste, CND, construction and demolition debris, trailer. Currently, there's two we wanna add, or DPW wants to add, an additional one. So the CND will go from three up to four in order to be able to take and have more material that we're able to store prior to hauling. That is estimated at $75,000. The John Deere tractor is $115,000. That'd also be funded by free cash. I think I alluded to the trailer would be funded by free cash as well. And those are the items that are below $50,000. On Wreck and Youth, they have a couple of requests. One request here that we have anticipated funding by free cash is $225,000 for the Red River Beach parking lot, which would include some drainage work and a total overlay of the parking lot itself. They do have a few CPC requests. One probably that, well, one that's over the $50,000 threshold is Brooks Park, calling it Phase 4, which is restrooms and playground improvements. That is estimated at $167,900 to be funded. Initially, the request is in front of CPC. If CPC does not fund these, then most likely these projects wouldn't be done this year. So just as a note, that is slated for, or the request is into CPC for funding. Just, I know the board has asked in the past about a comprehensive light program, how are we gonna improve the lighting in the Brooks Park area? So that is slated as a Phase 5, part of that project at a out year. The next area we go into would be wastewater. Under the wastewater, this is a little bit complicated, but in essence, it's a total, total cost of over $30 million. The components of that would be the following. Upon negotiation of an intermunicipal agreement with Chatham for the purchase capacity in their wastewater treatment facility, that number would be plugged in. Currently, I think we're using about $4 million in the plan. That would, $4 million would be paid out over a period of time. But for a debt exclusion borrowing authorization, we would have to appropriate that or have the borrowing authorization in one borrowing authorization and then spend it as we can. We did receive information back from Bond Counsel that you can, you can do that, have the borrowing authorization, knowing that you may pay it out over a 10-year cycle. So that's one piece of that puzzle. The second one is CWMP, which is Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan Implementation Services. The plan is, has a high level of complexity. There's a lot of different elements to it. And we have $150,000 that would be part of the debt exclusion to go over and facilitate helping to implement that plan. The next piece of that is the Pleasant Bay South Watershed Collection System Design and Construction. The design piece would be $2.5 million. The construction piece would be $22,800,000 is what the estimate is at this point. And then the fourth piece that would be part of the debt exclusion. This is all part of Phase 2 of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, is the Cole Brook Natural Attenuation Design and Construction. That has two components to it. This is a, similar to Muddy Creek, if you would, an alternative design concept that has $200,000 for design and construction. Anticipated improvements would be about $1.8 million. Just a note on that, anything we were to do would have to be in conjunction with the Harwich Conservation Trust, who actually owns the property. So we would not be able to just do that unilaterally. We'd have to reach agreement with them on the improvements. They are looking at doing the improvements in that area. Just for reference, the bogs actually fairly close to the Harbor Master's office on Bank Street, that the bogs exist. And then also under CPC, we do have a request in that's under consideration for the restoration of Hinkley's Pond with CPC. So we did find out a couple of years ago that CPC can be used to do some funding on environmental matters. So we do have a request in for $550,000, just as a reminder to folks, and that would not be part of the debt exclusion, that would be done separately. $500,000 would be for the application of an alum treatment, which would grab nitrogen or I guess phosphorus for freshwater and help to remove that from the system or make it more inert in the system and make sure that that pond gets cleaner treatment, if you would. Same, similar activity was done at the Long Pond, and I think that that has shown very favorable results. The $50,000 would be to do improvements to the parking area that is really adjacent to the Country Store at the intersection of the rail trail and Route 124, to do some improvements there, a stairway down to the water, and then more of a picnic area. We would not advocate opening that up for vehicular traffic because of the dangerous sightlines. And then the last item, or the last department, would be the Water Department. They have a crossover project. What that basically means is they wanna get in and do some water work ahead of the gas, the main gas transmission lines coming into the community. So they wanna come in and make sure that they can get out of their way, so we don't have the road redone as part of the gas project and then dig it up for waterways work. So they are trying to get in ahead. That is an estimated cost of $400,000. That would come from Water Enterprise retained earnings. And then they have two units of vehicles that they would need, Ford Super Duty F-350s. And that amount that they're looking for, for the two units of, so combined cost would be $107,856. That also would come from Water Enterprise retained earnings. And just for those, I guess keeping traps at home, just some of the numbers. So in terms of free cash utilization, it would be $1.155,975 out of $1.9 million that we have certified. The community preservation funds would be $833,734. Capital exclusion, the $420. The debt exclusion in total would be the $31,600, primarily driven by the wastewater.
$31 million.
$31 million, I'm sorry. $31 million. I read a lot of numbers and did pretty well, that I didn't screw them up. On the grants, we anticipate about $74,000. The golf maintenance fund, and it would be a debt exclusion, but again, primarily funded for the golf operation would be $1.2 million. Chapter 90 would be $700,000. Enterprise Fund, $541,786. And then other budget and funded by other appropriations would be $230,900. The $200,000 I alluded to in the conversation earlier. In terms of, I do have a couple of charts that are on, so if people wanna see kind of in graphic form, I do appreciate, it was the Capital Outlay that had suggested this to me, kinda where's the grouping? So we do have some images. Unfortunately, the images made it in previous packages. We didn't get it into the Selectment's package through my oversight. But one of the things is a lead-in to the next topic that we have on the agenda is what does all this mean? Throughout fairly good-sized numbers. So we have asked, and I've taken a stab at doing some of the financing legwork. And after the presentation here, if there certainly is any questions, we do have representatives of Hilltop Security, which is a, I guess, that's the parent company. First Southwest is the company that they are currently, I have a couple of representatives, to talk about what is this impact to the overall budget? And then what is the impact to a average homeowner, and the average home is $350,000. But that's the next agenda item. But I just wanted to let people know that we do have that ready to go for the next discussion.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Peter, comments?
No, I mean, I think the big item staring us out there is wastewater. And until we come to an intermunicipal agreement with Chatham, we're not really gonna know where we're going with it. We have a meeting the 21st with Chad, and our next negotiating session with Chad is on the 21st. And we're pretty close on language, and we're very close on language. It's all gonna come down to dollars and cents, quite frankly, mainly dollars, because I'll put 99 cents on the table, it's okay. But the millions of dollars we're talking about are gonna drive this thing. So beyond that, it's what we do, you know, as we always do year to year, to keep things going. And that's, at the moment, that's what I tend to focus on until we have an agreement with Chatham.
Thank you. Julie?
I just had a question on, just looking through our list. It doesn't seem like we're looking at any funds going towards the rotary. Is that because, I thought the last time we talked about the rotary at 39 and Pleasant Bay Road, we were going to see how things went with the repairs and the cutting back that they did, that DPW did. But I also thought we were kinda gonna look at that longer range, too.
Yeah, it is on there. I kinda focused on items that are FY '18. That is under Public Works, under Route 39, Pleasant Bay. I guess the modern terminology I'm supposed to use is roundabout instead of rotary. We all know that rotaries aren't very effective, but...
Right.
Roundabouts apparently are. So that is something that we are looking at. That cost after, is $600,000. Because that was so much higher than originally anticipated, I was hoping to kinda also include that into the roadway maintenance program. I think in this case, we had said to the board that, I think that we've really improved the site distance. DPW has done a considerable amount of work. I think it'd be worthwhile to get a year's worth of data and see if those improvements, site distance improvements, signage improvements, have had a positive public safety benefit. And then if they have not, then come back with the '19 request. So this gives us a little bit of time to see how those improvements work. And it's still on the plan, so it wouldn't be added in at a later date. So it's still something that's a known commodity.
Okay.
That's how we handle that.
And so then I just remembered that one other lengthy piece that might cause us some delays is if we did have to go to the rotary issue, the roundabout issue, that we might be talking about some telephone poles that might have to be moved, or at least one, and that can be a process in and of itself, is my understanding. So I'm just wondering if we should be looking at any of that.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we did, and I appreciate Lynn Cooper, the DPW Director, that he had the foresight that when we went out and cut back on trees, there was a couple fences that were in the town right away. Those have been moved back. So the idea is to clear out, and if we do need to do the roundabout, that there would be space and we wouldn't have to take as much. The telephone pole, that's a good memory. There's two pieces to it. There was some concern that the poles would inhibit site distance by cutting back some of the shrubbery on the backside of it. We've now created a large enough visual field, if you would, that the poles aren't of themselves enough to be a disruption. I think that, and I'll have a further discussion with Mr. Cooper, but I would make, I guess my instinct would be, if we decide the roundabout is needed, then we would wanna get in pretty early with the utility company to schedule that. Because to your point, it's gonna take some time for them to come out and relocate the poles. I know on the Muddy Creek project, doing that bridge, that's all on us now, unfortunately. So if we're gonna spend some money relocating some of the cost of moving poles, we need to kinda think that through in terms of having a funding source to back up that relocation.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Angela?
Just a question. Last time we talked about this plan, we talked about the library? Last time we talked about this plan, we talked about the library and the generator. And I see we have a generator in here. Is this just for the lights? Or is this the generator that does the whole piece of work? Or do we not need that other generator?
No, actually, the plan is that the $10,000 that was requested by Finance Committee, that is on order. That should be installed after the first of the year, so that is in queue, if you would. This one is, the $110,000 is for the larger generator. That would do everything, so it would do the elevators, the heat.
You can't, I just can't tell whether...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Anything else?
No, it's fine.
Turn it over to you, Jack. Mr. Ballantyne, question or comments? Mr. Ricanius? Mr. Larios?
I'll be taking mine as the COC.
I acknowledge the great work you folks did. The Town Administrator helped. Thank you. Mr. Chori? Mr. Amoris? Oh, come on, Dana?
Yes, I have one. Of course. On the whole wastewater project, we're anticipating that that would all be done through taxation. There's no mixture of fees in there, or there's no anticipation of betterments along that area or anything like that. We have it all under taxation. So am I correct in presuming that any kind of fee structure that would come from that would initially be low or small? Because you're just supporting some sort of operation that's being done in Chatham? Right now, the entire amount of money is designated through...
Correct.
Taxes.
Correct.
And initially... And initially, in all the discussions we've had and in the plan, there's a lot of different ways we can go in terms of financing. So right at the moment, there's no fee structure anticipated with this?
Let me, I guess, let me, let me answer that a, a couple of ways. Uh, if you think about it, there, there's really only a, a couple of mechanisms to generate money. There's a wastewater, uh, infrastructure fund, which is kind of the CPC, uh, version, that we could do a, um, a 3% surcharge, basically similar to, to CPC. I didn't, you know, last year, the board had a discussion with that, that did not see, you know, the light of day going to town meeting. So I do not recommend that that plan, uh, go forward in this. I think by doing a debt exclusion, you know, the one thing about that is you, you start to generate the money, which is good. But you are taxing people and building up. Uh, from some of the modeling I've done, it, it doesn't generate enough money to, to make a, a substantial difference. So by doing a debt exclusion, you have the ability to time projects and, and do the taxes strictly based upon when you need the money. And when you pay it off, it gets paid off. Uh, so I, I think that, and that is tax deductible, which I know was, was, uh, an issue with some board members to make sure that it would be tax deductible. On the fee structure, uh, if we were to build in a fee, I think in the first 10 years, you're only talking about hooking up 500 homes. So there, there's just no way that you would generate any kind of significant volume from 500 people. And anyone that does get hooked up, uh, that would have to be, uh, when we send the flow to Chatham, there's going to be a charge for all that. So if you want to separate, in my mind, I separate it between capital versus O and M, operation and maintenance. The, the fee structure for a fee would be driven by the O and M, the O and M costs for what we send would have to be recovered by the, the town to, to pay to Chatham for what they, what they treat. So when you, and then the last one is really betterments. And I think betterments you get into, i- is not tax deductible. Uh, again, you're talking about a, a very large amount of money for a very small number. And quite honestly, in, in the plan, uh, you know, the issue is townwide, but the solution is only about less than 50% of the community needs to be hooked up. So in my mind, i- i- you know, it's a significant equity question of how do you have 100% of the people cause the problem and have only 50% of the people pay the, pay the, pay the freight, if you would? So by doing a debt exclusion, I, I think now you have 100% of the people causing the problem and 100% of the people paying for the solution to that problem. Uh, the other item with betterment is what do you do in a situation where you have Muddy Creek? Where $6 million, that was mostly grant funded, that doesn't have a specific infrastructure related to it. Uh, that same, uh, that same, uh, issue will emerge on Cold Brook. And hopefully, as this is a 40-year plan, there will be other elements that will be able to do alternative technologies. And when you do a betterment, uh, how do you, how do you better on those alternative technologies? So I, I think it's a lot of problematic elements. So to me, and, and this isn't, you know, rocket science. I think, uh, Chatham has done, uh, some of it in terms of they took the approach of doing a debt exclusion on, on the project. Uh, we're doing it a little bit more phased, so we break it up into more pieces so we can be more accurate as we move forward.
I, I agree with all that. I just wanted to hear it said as part of any discussion on this. That's, that's the driving force and that's where the revenue is coming from.
Just add to that, it's, I think it's important to know that assuming we come to an agreement with Chatham and we take something to town meeting, the IMA and the, the funding and whatnot, the design of the, um, Pleasant Bay watershed collection system and, and building and all, and interconnecting with Chatham, we don't start the flow, anything to Chatham until 2021. So it's a ways out. And how else would you, at least short-term, pay for it? You had to borrow.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, uh, first, let me recognize the Capital Outlay Committee people that are here. And I think Chris Harlow's behind me, Joe McParlin and Bruce Nightengale at McManus. And, uh, who's missing is Bob, George and Peter Wall. Okay, they did a lot of work, uh, to get where we are. I'd like to make a few comments, um, about this. And Chris, can you just, I know you do a total at the bottom. I don't have mine. The total request versus the total recommendation so that we have a, you, you can get a feel of what the committee went through and the analysis of every department.
I mean, the, the, the seven-year total, grand total request was 82,000, uh, I'm sorry, $82 million.
But how about in the current year?
The, the current year, uh, under the town administrator recommended was 13 million is what's being slotted.
And requested of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? 13 million is the, uh, total requested amount.
And you should be around eight, or what's your number? Requested versus recommended?
Yeah, you know, I don't s.
You don't have requested.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see that because I broke it out into, uh, other pieces.
There's a delta. There's a difference between the two. Okay, so we worked through that. Um, a couple of things that, uh, the, the committee, uh, worked diligently with the town administrator. One was the library. Um, we, we felt that was, uh, critical, not only to lighting the place up, but, uh, to provide the services that it should get. Secondly is, as a result, uh, we came up, as you know, we do the, um, the bus tour. And that bus tour really came out, um, everybody walked it, looked at it. And that's why our recommendation, we sort of drew a line in the sand for the Red River Beach parking lot. Uh, we, we've just felt, uh, from a community standpoint and from a, a standpoint of the Premier Beach in Harwich, that we consider, uh, funding that effort. The, um, the debt service presentation, of course, is not in there and.
Coming up next.
It's coming up next. Um, that goes back also to one of those, um, issues that, uh, taxpayer asked us, what's my taxes going to look like when, when all this is done? The other thing we're very concerned about is the self-funding issue for the Gulf. Okay? This 90-10 still doesn't, um, strike well with some of the members on the committee. The planning number originally was 75-25. It's now 90-10, which we will work with right now. The, um, borrowing issue, and I think this is critical when this plan is submitted to town meeting and everybody sort of looks at it and everybody votes for at town meeting, yeah, they raised their hand, I'm yay for the capital plan. Um, at that meeting, I think, um, I will stand up. Um, let me, let me preface this. I think the town, uh, has a real marketing, um, decision or marketing effort to be initiated to help sell this thing. Okay? Um, the plan, $4 million is in that, Chris, if I'm not mistaken, 4 million is in this year?
For the initial wastewater, correct.
4 million. It's the 4 million that the Capital Outlay Committee has recommended and voting for. Okay? And we understand there are other numbers that are placeholders there. So we need to have the people who are voting at town meeting understand that those are placeholders. And I guess if they're watching TV right now, or watch this on, uh, recorded, that the numbers that are placed outward are best guesses for us. Um, we, we need to put the numbers in. Um, I think there's a $20 million number in '19? If I'm not mistaken.
Yes, the 22 million for the actual construction of, uh, the infrastructure.
Right, and that's a whole, and that 22 million, remember, is amortized, okay, over 10 or 20 years. So it's not a hit of 20 million per se, but you're going to see that in the debt service presentation. So the numbers there are kind of scary, uh, but they're palatable if we have the revenue stream to pay for them. So I just wanted to make that comment. And, um, I think this year was the finest year that the plan was developed on time, as accurate as possible. And this is the first year I can say that the town administrator and the Capital Outlay Committee came to the same numbers and to agreement. And that was because we, I think the town administrator, administrator did a fine job, uh, putting this thing together for, uh, for the town of Harwich. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, team. You guys did a great job. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Jack?
I guess I'd like to get back, back what Rich just said about what, what he called, I think, PR. I think we have a major education issue. And the committee feels very strongly that, uh, in addition to the large amount of dollars we're talking, it's essential we try to understand, uh, from the get-go, how this looks like it'll play out. Things are going to change. But we've got to educate people on that because every step is going to be integral to what went before and what's got to come next. And that's an area where we've got to spend some time as a town management, come up with something. It really is helpful to people to understand and get behind. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? We're all set. Thank you.
Anything further, Angela?
Uh, just, just a comment. In, obviously, uh, Chris mentioned that it looks like taxation will be needed for wastewater payments. I think that both the Gulf Committee and, and, uh, Department and, um, the waterways have done an excellent job over the last several years, because it's taken that long to do the job, to get organized in a way that they know what their revenue is and they can work with that and, and cover most, if not all, of, of their, their, uh, capital needs. And I think other departments have got to do the same kind of thing. Because we're going to have to do the wastewater projects one way or the other in the, in the future. And, and there are other departments that need things. Uh, the library can't charge fees. Understand that. But there are other people that should be taking a look at their costs and what they're charging, uh, people to use it, whatever it is, to see how they can cover, uh, anything. It would be helpful so we don't have to tax people for their particular items.
Comment?
Go ahead.
I wouldn't, I, I couldn't agree with you more. Uh, the issue that you have is that we still have departments that are non-revenue producing. Okay? And, um, the, the cost is a burden of theirs. I think the, um, the issue that we have on, you said, you know, waterways and also the water department and Gulf, they're proven. Okay? I think what you have here, uh, if it is wastewater per se, is an issue that there's upfront money that needs to be put up. Okay? The question is how does that upfront money then be converted to, you know, a type of revenue producing? So the money comes back in, in a sense. Um, this is where the Capital Outlay Committee has, has said, yeah, we understand that, you know, the town has to come up with, and then the revenue is the offset to that. Um, and that's something that I guess you and I are not going to be around to figure out, you know, uh, when.
I hope not.
Maybe you will, like, maybe you'll be our age by the time, uh, this thing comes to fruition and you can flush your toilet and be happy. But, um, I think the.
He's doing that, I'm happy.
Yeah, he's a happy guy. Um, I, I think the, the revenue piece, what's missing is there, uh, what I see from the Capital Outlay, and, and I think they'll, they'll all support this, is that either there has to be, Mr. Brown and I have discussed this, there has to be a champion within the town, either a subcommittee or something, that has to look at this as how is it going to be presented? How is it going to be, how is it going to be funded? How do you get the taxpayer to understand? And, and the stuff that we're doing today is, um, sort of the backbone of how do you do this? I think Chris's debt servicing sort of eases. Once, we need to get that at town meeting. Somehow, it has to be in the program that there is a presentation that says, this is the taxpayer's base now. This is what you're paying for the high school, roads, the library, whatever, administrative costs in town hall, all that stuff. This is going to come down and it's going to show a negative or the, the graph is going to go downwards. And then the pieces that are going to off, sorry, the pieces that are going to offset that is the wastewater. Okay? And somebody's got to do it. And it's not anybody here, kind of thing. So.
Thank you, Richard. Julie? Peter?
Um, I think you hit upon it, you know, we kind of joked a little bit about you can flush your toilet now and everybody's smiling, right? Well, because most people don't understand what we're trying to deal with here with wastewater yet. And that's the big thing is educating that, number one, it needs to be done because our estuaries are, you know, choking, if you will. They need to be cleaned up. And Title V septic systems don't do that. The only way to attempt to do that at the moment is by some type of sewer system. And it's expensive. If we don't do it and take the time and effort and the dollars to make progress, ensure we're making progress on these seven different, um, watersheds, if you will, not all at once, but over time, someone else is going to dictate what we do. And so right now, we have decisions to make. It's our choice how we proceed at the moment. But if we don't make progress, and then, you know, you guys don't know this, we've been talking about this before, someone else, whether it's a judge or some court system or something, is going to descend upon us and force us to do something in a way that we may not have done it before. And probably at a lot more expense than the way we're headed at the moment. So we are, are all going to have to burden, uh, carry the burden of this, this debt. There's no doubt about it. But educating people about the, the whole thing, what it means, the impact, what they're going to see personally, you know, on their tax bills and whatnot, is just going to be key going forward. And you know as well as we do, we hold different workshops on wastewater and whatnot, and seven people show up or 15 people show up or whatever, a much greater effort's going to have to be made. Otherwise, this thing's going to fail the first time, maybe fail the second time. I don't know. It might be one of those things that just happens. But we do have an opportunity with Chatham. And by the way, the $4 million that's in here now is our number, not Chatham's. Chatham's is around a $9 million number. So, you know, there is some negotiation that needs to take place here. Um, it's just big numbers. And we're not used to those kind of really big numbers unless you're building a school or, you know, some municipal building or something.
Man, the, um, if, if, if we can foresee some kind of dollars being spent in the future, uh, capital dollars coming out, um, and the funding issue, um, becomes more difficult, um, other capital expenditures are going to not be funded. Okay? And the town has to understand that. Um, maybe we don't get the pumper for a half a million dollars. Or maybe we didn't get the parking lot or something like that. Um, the public safety, which everybody considers number one, um, and I do too, maybe critical expenses or capital funding issues there. So I, I think the, um, the, the sale of this wastewater, which is the, the, the big elephant in the room, uh, people have to understand if, if they don't accept it, there's an offset. And the offset is you, you know, if you, if you want to maintain your taxes to some extent, then wastewater, as you said, the regulatory standpoint, a legal standpoint, it's going to happen. It doesn't have to happen that you need a new fire truck, you need X amount in your budget. So I, I just, it's just the warning. I mean, I hate to put it that way. But the Capital Outlay has also said in every presentation it's made, we have assets in the town that we're not using. These assets can be turned into dollars and those dollars could be made as offsets to what's happening or going to happen in the future. And I just make that comment. We, we live with that. The Capital Outlay Committee, that's one of our issues every year, is, um, not only those assets are not doing anything, but from a, from the Finance Committee's standpoint on the yearly budget, they're funding it at, you know, 100 to $200,000 a year for assets we're not using, just to maintain them. And I'll let Mr. Brown worry about that in his committee.
Thank you. Thank you. Follow up, Angela?
Uh, I just wanted to add something to Peter's comment. Um, if we follow our plan for wastewater, it'll take us about 40 years or so to do the project. And we'll be paying for it over 40 years. So you take the whole big pile of money that comes up and divide it by 40, and that's about where we are. If we don't go forward and get forced by the court, which has already made them, uh.
Pending.
Uh, it's a pending possibility, strong possibility of that. Uh, they. They could have us do it in two or three years or however long they want. And if you go to any of the meetings, you will see them, particularly the people who have led this suit, they want it done fast. And it's going to be a very disruptive thing to deal with, if it ever comes to be.
Jack?
Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you very much. Thanks again, Chris.
So with maybe a lead-in to the next topic, Mr. Chairman, I'll give the folks from Hilltop an opportunity to come up front here. But as I alluded to, and I do want to at least point out to some of the folks at Capital Outlay and such, that, you know, I did, I did an initial analysis to kind of see, but, you know, there is some limit to the ability for staff to be able to be an expert in these areas of municipal finance. So Andy Gould, the Finance Director, used First Southwest, now Hilltop Security, as his financial advisor up in, when he was in Salisbury. I have familiarity with Mr. Frazier, who I'll introduce momentarily, when I was in the town of Wellesley. So it's a, it's a firm that, you know, I have a lot of firsthand knowledge with. And they have the expertise and they find the things that, quite honestly, I may not find in doing some of these initial analysis. They did do that in this case. They found something that I had made a miscalculation on, just I wasn't familiar with the SRF funding, as familiar as I should be perhaps. But this evening, we have two folks, and I think what they'll do is just do a little introduction about their firm and what they do, just so we have a sense. And then they'll get into the two graphs. But Peter Frazier from First Southwest and Hilltop Security and Christie Tofori, the two folks that helped me tremendously.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Again, just, I don't want to wear you out with the introduction, but just to give you a little bit of a sense of what we do. Again, my name's Peter Frazier. I'm Managing Director in the Boston office of First Southwest, which is a division of Hilltop Securities, which is a national firm that acts as financial advisor, among other things, to literally thousands of municipalities nationwide. We work with about 180 Massachusetts municipalities. We originate somewhere between 200 and 300 bond issues and note issues every year out of the Boston office with a par value of somewhere around $2 billion. So we do an awful lot of this work. As part of it, and my partner here is Christie Tofori, who's a Vice President. I've been working with Massachusetts municipalities for the last 30 years. Christie has been working for about 10 years with these municipalities. And among the tasks that we do is help communities structure their debt, starting from the very genesis of a project, trying to model, trying to get a sense for what communities that have certain capital needs, how they would structure that debt, what the affordability would be in terms of tax impact as well as rate impact through the process of developing all the offering documents, the official statement that goes out at the time of sale, helping with the rating process as well. And obviously, Harwich has a very strong AA+ rating that you should be proud of through the sale process and delivery of the funds to make it happen. At Town Administrator Clark's request, we took some information that he had provided in terms of sort of a plan, the existing debt, as well as these projects that are on the chalkboard at the time. And Christie took that information and has developed a plan. We've got some summary charts. It's always important to remember that there are assumptions built into everything in terms of what those projects are going to cost, when they're going to come online, what the interest rates are going to be sometime in the future. So with that in mind, let me turn it over to Christie, and she can walk us through the exhibits.
It's coming.
There we go. So the best way to go through a debt model is to look at a pictorial summary, I guess. A picture's worth 1,000 words, right? So I'll try to keep it to less than 1,000 words. Right now, we're showing a graph that summarizes the town's existing and proposed, what the town is expecting to bring online, tax-supported debt service. So that's all principal and interest payments on bonds that are to be issued for projects that are expected to be supported with tax revenue. So we're not including any water debt service on bonds that were issued for water projects that are being paid for by, and supported by user fees and charges. So here you'll see in the far-left column, we've, in the orange, we've got the town's existing tax-supported debt service. That's around $2.4 million in 2016, and then it drops off every year and is completely paid off in 2029. And you'll see, we've layered on the bring-on of additional tax-supported debt service related to the wastewater project, which... Great, thank you. Sorry, Peter.
In one ear and now at the other, right?
Yeah. The red, the red here, you'll see, is related to the wastewater tax-supported debt service, which comprises the big, the biggest component of the proposed debt. And you'll see, we've added in the estimated $10 million in prospective Sakwa-Tucket debt that is expected to be tax-supported. There's $10 million of the Sakwa-Tucket Harbor debt that is expected to be issued. And of that $10 million, we're reflecting that, a million of that is going to be funded in the form of grants. And then the $9 million balance will be funded with borrowing. Of that $9 million that will be borrowed, we're assuming that 6%... $6 million of that will be self-supported with user fees, and then $3 million will be tax-supported. And then at the very top, you'll see we're layering on the proposed debt service related to the town's share of the Cape Cod Tech borrowing. So you'll see in 2016, we're at $2.4 million. And then in 2021, it jumps up to almost $4, $4.5 million. And that's mainly due to the bring-on of additional wastewater debt. But you'll see, if we look at the line, that gradually increases every year by 3.5%. We're looking at the total existing and proposed tax-supported debt service as compared to a debt service target of growing at 3.5% every year. And the way we arrived at the 3.5% growth target was looking at the year-over-year tax levy increase of 2.5% from the prior year and adding on 1% of new growth, which has been, in the past five years, the town's growth rate historically.
Yeah, that's been the minimum growth rate.
Minimal growth?
It's average greater than 3.5, so we'll save with 3.5 as a growth rate.
So you'll see, the biggest thing to note here is that you'll see as the town's existing tax-supported debt service drops off, we're kind of dovetailing in the proposed tax-supported debt service. So when you look at it, in terms of overall debt service supported by the taxpayers, it's really just, you know, 2021 is really the big year where it jumps up. And then in 2026, it jumps up again, again, due to the bring-on of additional wastewater debt. And just for, to make things a little more relative, the town's got approximately $22.5 million of outstanding principal at this, at the moment, where $14 million of that is tax-supported, so that's what we're showing here. And the proposed debt, we're reflecting around $55 million over the next eight to nine years. So just to put things in perspective. And then if we move along to the second slide, we just put together a graph showing the estimated tax impact on the average single-family home, assuming a $350,000 value and assuming the town's fiscal '17 assessed, assessed value. So you'll see here, the average single-family home is paying approximately $170 a year to pay for these tax-supported debt projects. And in fiscal 2021, where you see the biggest spike in debt service for the tax-supported projects, it increases from the $170 a year to $310 a year. So it's really an increase of around $140 a year for the average single-family home. And again, this, all this modeling is based on interest rate assumptions, based on the current market and the Mass Clean Water Trust subsidized loan rate of 2% and there are fees that would be paid over the life of those loans. And all these models are always subject to cash flow needs. We would want to analyze any cash flow projections when these projects are, how the projects are going to be spent. And we're also assuming that all of these borrowings, including this, for the Sakwa-Tucket Harbor, would be borrowed on a tax-exempt basis. So there would be some tax diligence that Bond Council and Tax Council would want to look into with respect to private use and any lease arrangements and contracts related to the project.
Excellent. Chris?
I just want to thank you so much for doing the work. Just a couple of items of note, just to make sure that we have a clear understanding. Tried to present kind of a worst-case scenario in this modeling, most particularly on the tech school. The tech school had a range of $120 to $150 million, our portion of that. So the tech school is shown as, I believe, the blue bar, the blue bar in that. The other one, and I know I had done a presentation to, a very informal presentation, and I had assumed declining debt. And when you see the existing debt, that's primarily Montemoy Middle, Montemoy School, the high school, you can see how dramatic that drops off because we had the ability to do a declining debt schedule. When you go and borrow money through the Water Pollution Abatement Trust...
That's the old name, it's Massachusetts Clean Water Trust.
Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. It shows I've been around for a little bit myself. But in that, you, they have a requirement that is level debt service. And part of, you know, I guess, unfortunately, I guess, the way I look at it, is when you have that declining, you have the ability to take big slugs, and if you could break them up, then as things drop off, you can add things in. And in the long run, it is a little bit more cost-effective. You don't pay as much interest here by doing level debt service because the uncertainty in the out-years is not known. It tends to be a little bit higher interest overall. But the other piece, we did do the Sakwa-Tucket Harbor as a net and not a, not a, not a gross in terms of that. So we are trying to capture those areas where we know we'll be able to do some financing in-house. But I think just one of the things that I know at the Capital Outlay, and this is a little different than what I had presented because of that factor, but I think that the sense I got from people is that they thought, oh, my $170 worth of my tax bill now on a $350,000 home is going to go to like $6, $7, or $800. So, you know, in my mind, yes, these numbers are, you know, larger and certainly, you know, I'd like to see 100 or 150, which this is the range that we're in as opposed to 300 or 350. But certainly for the taxpayer, and I think we had figured out at Capital Outlay, this is about 10% of the overall budget. So as the tax bills go up, this part of the debt service would, would be in that, in that range, that that would go up that amount. And what happens with education and public safety and all that is obviously separate from this. But I think the 3.5% tool is at least an indicator that you see, we do go over. But you could see in the out-years, we do have some capacity in those out-years. So the idea is to put a picture to what the potential reality of what this could be coming up. And then just so I don't get accused, you know, house values do change. So, you know, if somebody says, well, you know, Mr. Clark, you said it was only going to be $100, and it's not, it's $300. Well, if your house value goes from $350,000 to $400,000, the assumption doesn't hold anymore. So obviously, when you're looking this far out, the assumptions, we have to use some assumptions, so we're using assumptions that are in place today, and those may not always hold for individual homeowners.
Thank you, Chris. Richard?
Chris, since you mentioned the Capital Outlay, if you can go back one second. Former?
One slide?
Previous.
The other slide. The one with, okay. You're making the 3.5% line sound positive, okay? And it's not positive. I mean, it's positive in the sense that it's going up, but the fact is, the 3.5% is a target that the town tries to keep, correct? Okay? So it just shows that the town always borrows. So, I mean, that's great, and you're showing that if we continued historically and 3.5% is what's going up, that's great. Well, that's, that's sort of an argument that I would take, or the Capital Outlay Committee would say, why are we doing 3.5% every year? At the assumption that historically we have, and we're staying within a margin above or below, fine. But I think the, the effort that we should have as a town is minimize what the natural path of the 3.5% is. That's one thing. If you can go to the next chart, and it's the next chart that the Capital Outlay actually requested. The 350? Hello?
I'm sorry.
No problem. Next one. There's, we've got two, yeah. Next.
And then that, the other one?
That's it.
There you go.
These are, the assumption here is the four supporting, supporting efforts at the bottom give you those charts, give you those bar. What it doesn't say is, what's, what is the baseline? What is the average 350 house paying for that this is going to be added to? If it's public safety, if it's whatever that makes, I'm going to just throw out a number, that a 350 house pays, I don't know, I'm going to say $3,000. If I knew what, if the average taxpayer knew what he was paying for in his tax bill, in other words, 50% of it is for administration of the town, 10% is for current debt. This is the additional debt that's going to be added to the current. And I think what's missing is we're not telling, and I'm not, it's not part of the charge here, but I think what you have to know is there's a baseline to what someone is paying for that we have to watch for, and these are the additions to the current. So that one can expect, given those four efforts, these are the additional numbers, the deltas that are going to be added to. This doesn't include any other capital budgetary items that we throw on. So this number could, these numbers could be, you know, and again, the effort was, define some of the larger efforts that are coming up. These are the larger efforts that are coming up. I think that this has to be described, that these are the larger efforts coming up. This is going to impact it, if everything was status quo. And it's not going to be status quo, we sort of know that. And unfortunately, you guys wouldn't know that, okay? So I think when, and Chris put the caveat on this from day one, that there's a lot of assumptions that have to be made. And some of the assumptions, I think we, when this is presented beyond this initial presentation, we have to tell people, so you guys don't get beat up and the Capital Outlay doesn't get beat up. people, so you guys don't get beat up and the Capital Outlay doesn't get beat up, is that these are the efforts on top of
Right.
the normal efforts of the town. Can I just throw that out to you? And I'm going to go home and watch the game. See you, guys.
Thank you, Richard. Angelo, can you go on the comments?
I I was just curious, the length of time to repay the debt that you're using in here?
Sure. Massachusetts, and forgive me if I'm telling you things you already know, but in under Massachusetts general laws, all of the borrowing terms for any type of capital is described in the law. For sewer wastewater projects, you have a thirty-year maximum amortization period. In this model, we're using twenty years. And the another thing that that's probably worth knowing is that for the Clean Water Trust loans, these are subsidized loans provided by the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, which is a sub-department of the Massachusetts Treasurer's Office. And they go out and borrow money at market rates on their credit rating, and then make subsidized loans at a guaranteed two percent for twenty years or two point three nine percent for thirty years. So, you know, we could do some other modeling. But it tends to be sort of the best game in town in terms of compared to if the town were to borrow on its own credit through the bond market. And we are modeling the Sagatucket and the Cape Cod Tech as outside of the trust because the trust only does eligible wastewater, water, or certain landfill projects. So they don't, they don't cover all kinds of borrowing by the community. And in under that case, right now, we're using an interest rate of four, four percent. Now, that's going to change over time. Historically, it's been a guarantee of that two percent for twenty years or two thirty-nine for thirty years from the trust. But the the other component, it like will rise and fall with the general level of interest rates, if that makes sense.
Well, okay. The reason I ask is, I can understand doing this chart so you know what could happen to you. But I'd also like to see another chart that says, if everything went well, it would be here. And if you did thirty years rather than twenty, it's less dollars on my house each year, which is what I want. Yes, I will be paying some more in total. But first of all, I'm not going to be here in two thousand and forty-four, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not worried about that piece. And so I would think it might be helpful to, I don't mean, you know, going crazy. I mean, things that seem to make sense. The other thing I would do, quite frankly, is get rid of all of Sagatucket Harbor and say, we should be able to cover that in in fees. You know, those kinds of things.
You're you're right on target in terms of your thinking the ordinarily what we do. And I think Christopher's sort of guidance on this first round is let's keep it simple. You know, once we establish the model and get folks familiar with it, then we can play all those what-if games in terms of both the amount and the timing, as well as the amortization period. So we can make make changes in the sort of geography of that graph. But and and it's sort of, we're limited only by your imagination in terms of what what various scenarios you'd like us to to.
Yeah, I guess it's been my imagination for the last ten years from either Capital Outlay or Finance Committee to to consider the cost per year for our residents to keep it as low as we can, and also to make sure that we extend the debt to cover the period of good use of the building or whatever. I don't want to go too long. But we we tend to to build a a building that's going to last twenty-five years and charge it off at seven or ten. And everybody else gets a free ride. And the people who happen to be here have paid for this building. And I think conceptually, I'd like to go in a different direction.
Yeah, I mean, if I if I may, I'm not sure that that there's any necessarily right or wrong answer with respect, but but showing it's it's sort of an expression of your preference and as well as a trade-off between, do you want to pay more now and pay it off more quickly, or pay less now and pay it off more slowly, but pay more interest in the aggregate? And it's a matter of just modeling and figuring out what the the preference of the community is. I think, you know, Christopher's, and I'm reluctant to speak for him, but in the past has had a bias towards paying things off more quickly because it allows you to layer on the inevitable next project. And also by borrowing shorter, you tend to borrow at a slightly lower interest rate. So there, again, but we we could go back and reasonable people can disagree.
Okay.
And we can model that all day long. So you can see whatever you'd like to see.
I'm not classified as reasonable usually.
Not even close. Thank you, Angelo. Larry, the comment?
Regarding this discussion and payoff longer rate, I know the the county and county commission has been lobbying for some time to to extend it from thirty years to forty years because it's such a large debt for the the county as a whole. And I wondered if there's any look at the SRF funding in this, is it zero percent, is that that's is part of this as well?
Well, this is this is all SRF funding.
It is.
We did not take into account the zero. We we did not because the zero was done as part of a stimuli stimulus funding initially. It's not always done.
Only the Title V projects can be done on a zero percent basis. All of the regular wastewater projects are at two percent for twenty years or two thirty-nine.
I would I would argue, I'm afraid I have to argue that a bit because there has been funding for zero percent for wastewater. In fact, Chatham got some of that.
Do you know how long ago that was? And what?
Uh, three or four years ago.
I think that was probably Ti- Title V.
No, I I don't believe so. I'll double-check that. If you double-check that, I will. But I'm sure there's at least one town that got zero percent for wastewater. And that was renewed recently. Now, going forward, I don't know how how that will go. The other point if I, Jamie, can we go to the first slide? The other point that I'd make, and you guys all referred to, I know Peter did and everyone, is one of the things we do have under our control is timing. And to the degree that we're, and as long as we're making good faith efforts, as we are with Muddy Creek, as we are with Cold Brook, so we convince the judges that Peter referred to that were, you know, were serious people, this chart would look different, for instance, if you moved the twenty-one, year twenty-one peak just one or two years out, when the school debt fell down. And there's a chance we could get away with that as we move away with our other projects. If we sign the IMA showing we're going forward, that would make this debt look better as well. So just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you, Larry. Julie?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I mean, and really, I know you don't have a crystal ball, so you can't necessarily answer them. But I'm going to go negative where Angelo went positive and thinking that, you know, we're looking at two thousand and sixteen now, we're talking about, you know, the future budgets. And and then we're also talking about the ten-year cycle and the financial markets generally speaking. So two point three nine percent would be the thirty-year rate, and that's never going to move, right?
Well, it hasn't so far.
Yeah.
I I should, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but but when the program originated back in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one, it was actually at zero percent. And because they were trying to stretch their dollars and and make more loans to communities, they up.
Can you just speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. They they up that rate to two percent for twenty and two point three nine. That's where it stayed. And, you know, absent, there could be some legislation that that changes that. But I don't think it's changed in sixteen years or so. So.
So that's, so we can probably.
It's it's much more reliable than the market as a whole. That's certain.
Okay.
Real quick, Julie.
Yeah, just I I think it's important that the SRF funding, we we kind of say that kind of quickly, and just for folks at home. I mean, it's basically the Massachusetts State Bank, if you would. And so the the state has funded it, federal funds went into it initially, and any money that gets paid goes back into that bank. So it it's not a typical marketplace, if you would. It's more of a controlled marketplace for specific purposes and specific projects. So it it's not going to be as subject to market conditions, if you would, that you'd see in the in the public sector and the private sector funding, you know. So I think that's important, and as a primary funding vehicle, because we would never get two percent for thirty years or twenty years in in the private sector.
Right. No, I and and that I understand. The only other thing I, you know, when we were talking about the the growth rate, that was, I think, three and a half percent is what this is based.
Right?
So my only my only comment about that, with the market, and this does affect the markets, the financial markets, is that if we start to see a downturn, you know, three and a half percent was cautious. Could it be, you know, and again, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but we could be looking at worse numbers.
The 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 reason that we're using three and a half percent is by law in Massachusetts, under Proposition Two and a Half, you're allowed to raise your levy limit regardless of what the values do in terms of property values by two and a half percent plus the value of new growth in the community. And so what we looked at was the last five years and the the lowest year, you know, taking into account that two and a half percent plus the new growth was a little over three and a half percent, and some were, I think, over four. And and so what we were trying to do there is not so much make a prediction about what it'll be in the future, because we know at minimum, you can raise it two and a half percent. But it was more to make the point that, or at least show in those years, if the your levy grows three and a half percent, then that means the debt side of the house could grow at three and a half percent without limiting the rest of the municipal side of the house.
Okay.
So, you know, you could have salary increases and that kind of thing on that side and still grow your capital appropriation.
Okay.
And so that it was more that than trying to say we were predicting exactly what
Right. Okay.
revenues are going to grow.
Great. Thank you.
Peter?
When I look at this chart, I think you mentioned something like forty or fifty million dollars in in debt for wastewater. Is that the number you had, Christie?
Yes. Forty-five million for wastewater
Forty-five million?
over the next seven or eight, eight or nine years.
Okay. And and that's really the near-term start of it, quite frankly. That's, you know, as you look at our our seven-year capital plan, you know, that's the kind of number you have in here. But our project goes on for forty years. What I encourage all of us to do in this kind of modeling is to put it all in there. It's going to be a hundred and eighty million dollars roughly. Now, phased over time, and we have a very detailed finance plan, if you will, or financial plan for it. But, you know, I think we're, I won't say deceiving, but we're we're kind of cheating ourselves. We think we're going to have this big gap down here at the end because guess what? There's going to be more piled on. So I think this is a great start, but I think it has to get more comprehensive as we go forward, if you will. And then on the the other chart, if we could flip to the one on the homeowner, if we could, I would I would take a shot at trying to figure out, I'll just say what our general debt level is every year. Take away projects that are ten million and more because those are special events. But, you know, and we're not building schools all the time, and, you know, they harvest all the time, that kind of thing. But there's just general debt we seem to take on. I don't know whether the number's two million dollars or three million, five million dollars, whatever, every year. And it probably got to just get factored in there because I think, Angelo, to your point, you know, the homeowners are paying for that anyhow. I mean, it's it's in there. So there is some increase in what their their total debt service is at that point. And then my next question is, and this is not to put you on the spot, but I just try to understand how you folks are compensated. Because I know you you've been working here with Chris and whatnot. Are you tied into, you know, getting the the bond management thing, or how's that work?
Yep. That's a, that's a great question because what what we are are sort of consultants as opposed to, we don't lend you the money. We don't get a piece of, you know, we're not making some negotiated deal for with you. What typically happens is high-grade credits like yourselves borrow on a competitive basis, meaning we sort of get you all set up, help you with all your documentation, and you put your bonds out, not the Clean Water Trust because that's just a a deal that between you and the state. But we would help you with the offering document, which would look something like this. This is the three-point four million dollar note deal that you did last June. We'd we'd put all that stuff together, then we'd get sealed bids in on a particular day, and and we'd figure out from there what your interest rate was and who the lender is. We do that for a fee. And it's based in part on, you know, there's a fixed component, and then part of it is based on how much you're borrowing. But and we could, we can get into exactly what it would be or what we think it would be based on a a particular scenario. But that's, that's the way we're compensated.
Okay, okay.
And you guys know everything upfront.
I just want to provide a little clarity to that, too. We had, I think it's Cape Cod Five that the town had been using. Every year, we go out to to debt. So Cape Cod Five was preparing some of these documents for us. They were receiving compensation for that. Kind of a standard arrangement, if you would, in in the marketplace. Cape Cod Five had Jim Eldridge, is that his name? He was the primary guy. He'd been around like thirty years. He's he's now formally retired. So it was kind of the opportunity to to look and see who else is out there. So we we decided to, in my opinion, upgrade to a a better firm to provide some additional resources for those official statements that have to be done for permanent financing.
So so we used to, we used to refer to you as bond counsel, because that's what we used to call Cape Cod Five.
No, bond counsel is actually the attorneys that make sure all this stuff is legal. We pay them, too. But these are the financial advisors that put together the schedules that go out to market.
Okay. All right. So until we do some sort of a bond placement.
Yep.
I'm just asking, so I can understand. You're basically marketing here. I mean.
No, no, we're, the the way we work is typically, we don't charge unless you come to market with an issue.
Right.
Except for you have an annual disclosure obligation that is required by the SEC. Every year, you've got to produce a document and send it to a repository, a central kind of library. And we help with that, and we charge for that on an annual basis.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Sure.
Can anyone speak?
I'm good.
Christopher's in debt?
I'm good.
You follow up? Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks for having us.
Thank you for.
Go Pats. You noticed? I did. I did. But not at firsthand, I cleared the room. It wasn't you.
I don't think it was you with the game.
So next up is Old Business Historic District Historical Commission Membership Potential Charter Change. This was on the agenda last week. I know Greg came and did his presentation and then left. The question was similar to the one we asked the Finance Committee. This one is, there's seven members and five alternates. It was recommended at a Historic District Commission meeting and by Elaine Banta, who does their paperwork. She's the their secretary, board secretary, that we switch maybe to less alternates, to like a seven and two, a more traditional board. Do we need five alternates? And the second part of that was, she had she had requested or posed the idea of a stipend position to get more expertise on the board rather than just what we what we appoint. Chris?
At the last meeting, there was a request to, what does the state law, what's the guidance? So we did put in the packet that the commission shall consist of not less than three nor more than seven. And then whatever number you pick, so if you were to pick five, then the alternates you can't have. You should have the same number of alternates, or you cannot exceed the number of principal members. So you could do two alternates, five primary members, two alternates. If you wanted to go max on the alternates, if you had five, then you'd have to do five again. So I think the question was, why is there potentially fourteen people? And it's seven and seven has been so far picked.
So before we bring the Charter Review Group back before us, this was one of the, this was one of the things that we had discussed changing. So any thoughts? Peter?
We met with them last week. I think they said of the seven members, they had five.
I thought they said they had.
I thought it was five and two
Yeah.
is what their membership was at the moment, not what their seats are allowed. They were allowed seven and five.
Seven and five.
Five alternates. So, you know, one question is, if you're going to, if you're going to have that many positions available, yet they're not full, obviously, none of us interest in it. And so my suggestion there is we we It just gives you enough, enough flexibility, alternates, to keep them on board and let them step in if they need to. Otherwise, you get a lot of people tied up, and we could use them out of the committees, quite frankly, would sort of make sense to me. I mean, if they were fully staffed that, you know, had seven regular members and five alternates now, you'd say, well, okay, they're humming along and people have enough interest and want to do it. I don't see a lot of interest there.
See the reason to keep them at seven and not go to a five and three or a five and two?
I think if historically they'd been at seven, as long as we can staff the seven. If we had trouble getting to seven, then I think we might consider going to five.
Okay. Angelo?
I personally think the five and three number is better, because we know we don't have a lot of people interested in a lot of the committees anyway. And the way we operate, I think we need a goodly number of alternates because of people not being able to stay in town or be around. But it's really, it's one of those things that's up in the air, and I would think we should chat with some of the people on the committee, quite frankly, to get their feeling about it.
You're up against Chairman, I mean.
Yeah, and I think the intent was to have them do that last week, so, and prior to that, they canceled the meeting, too. So I think this really has turned into kind of an us decision and recommendation, if they want to come back and argue it, then. Julie?
I think, I think that last week, one of the comments was that so many people did travel and weren't available that they would have preferred the seven, because then they would have the ability to have other people there to have a quorum, if I'm remembering correctly.
They did, but obviously with seven, you need four to have a quorum.
Right.
With five, you only need three to have a quorum. So, I mean, if you lower the number of, like Angelo was talking about, lower it to five, then your quorum number goes down, too.
But.
The question, though, the question really becomes in my mind, how much business do they need to conduct? In other words, do they have people that they assign as specific activities and they're worried about, I'm making this up, paint colors, and somebody else worries about, I don't know, siding on a house, and somebody else worries about, you know, whatever? And do they break themselves up like that, or is everybody trying to work everything so that you really just need a quorum?
The meetings that I've been at, they've, they've all worked together. The only, the only working groups they ever put together was, was other projects. I mean, I think part of this, too, is going to be us, there's certain state guidelines, but us redoing their charge as well. Because I've heard in meetings, them discussing potential things out in West Howard, which are, you know, you know, this is a potential historic district commission, so we should work on this and kind of rein it in a little bit and tighten the group. I'm a fan of tightening the group a little bit.
And if I remember correctly, Greg announced he was leaving, I think.
Yeah, in the month of this month, was it?
No, no, it was January.
First of the year, I'd say.
Yeah, I thought December 31st was what he.
Did they have somebody else resign recently?
I believe so.
Yes, Miranda DeBlee.
Okay, so I mean, you know, they lost two.
And Bob Bradley has expressed interest in getting off, too. He stayed on because of the lack of expertise.
Right, so they're probably going to get down to three members, you know, to get back up again, so.
Right.
It would be hard to get to seven, quite frankly.
I don't think it's going to be difficult.
I'd like to recommend that we go to five and three or five and two. I mean, that would be my recommendation for charter review.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't have a, I just, I think, I have to go back and watch that, because I thought what he was saying also was that even the alter, it was hard for them with their members and their alternates, that they had so many people traveling and that they were having a hard time overall. Isn't that what he said?
Yeah, but see, here's the problem. If they only had five regular members and two alternates, that's seven.
Right.
And they're trying to get four at every meeting, so you can't be missing too many and you can't make a quorum even with the alternate.
Right.
So one of the problems is the number of folks they currently have.
Well, yeah, and if they're not, if they're traveling, I mean, that's, that's an issue, too, whether it's five or seven. Because if they're all, if they're all traveling a lot, we still have an issue.
Well, but if you do, excuse me, if you do five regular and I'll say three alternates, you only need to get the three people being there to have a quorum. That should give you a darn good chance. I mean, you get three out of eight.
You would hope, but it was sounding like it wasn't.
You know what I mean?
And last year on the interview committee, we asked that question, you're going to be here all winter? And we, we actually, in one case, picked somebody over somebody else, because they were going to be here for the entire winter, so. Angelo, do you have any other thoughts on that?
No, I would suggest the five and three piece. And since we have to go through the whole process, the change in charter, there'll be all sorts of discussions before, you know, we get to the endpoint.
I'd like to get charter review back in here sooner than later to give them what we want to change in the charter. So that's part of that, is so I think the, is the consensus five and, five and three?
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. Angelo?
And I was just saying, if you would like and give me a list of that, I can bring them to the charter review committee meetings.
Okay. I'll send you an email of what I've got so far. Okay. Under New Business, anyone have anything for New Business? There's nothing under there. Okay, Town Administrator's Report. Go ahead.
Excuse me. I'll hold this for the.
Selectman's Report, okay. Town Administrator's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep this brief, just on the two topics here that I have listed. The interim finance director position update. Obviously, Andy Gould had provided his resignation. He's moving on. He'll be here through the end of December. I have met with two folks and really wanted to get, as a finance director slash town accountant, it's really a board decision. In terms of it, I think my suggestion here would be twofold. One, try to get somebody in here for 90 days, and then second, I'll bring out the police chief process that we used for the recruitment to kind of put a timeline together for how we could potentially have somebody on board within that 90 days. The question that came up is, I met with, Andy and I met with two folks last week. We have a retired gentleman that retired from a Cape community that is interested in helping us out. Obviously, at being compensated for helping us out, he would come in two days, 30, over 30 years of experience, so certainly somebody knows what they're doing, would come in and facilitate through the process of getting us closer to town meeting. A lot of the work's been done, so we're in pretty good, pretty good shape. And he did respond back. I met with both of them on Tuesday, asked them to respond back by Friday if they were interested. He did respond back that he is interested in helping us. If the board is comfortable with that, having a part-time person come in for the 90 days, I can have him or get some kind of agreement with him, bring that back to the board for the next meeting, with the idea that we would try to have a little bit of overlap between Andy's departure and the interim coming in. The other person I met with was someone that was interested in full-time and wanted the full-time position for 90 days, and then that person would also be a candidate for the permanent replacement. And I don't know what the, what the board thought of those two. Now, that second candidate, I laid out, and at least I checked my email before coming in, did not get back to me on Friday, so I don't know if they've had a change of heart or what. But I guess the question is, is the board comfortable, well, I guess, is the board comfortable with going with a person that would not be a candidate to be a permanent replacement and would just do the 90 days and help through? Or is the board okay with recommending a person that would be here full-time for 90 days and also a candidate? The pros and cons of that, obviously, in my mind, is by signing up, and I can have certainly both of them come in for next week, if you sign up for somebody full-time, does that then drive other people away, because there's a presumption that that person has the inside track, if you would? And then, you know, obviously, the pro side of that is by having somebody in, you know, we're going to hit the ground running and be able to kind of pick up speed quicker. But that's something, you know, I know in my experience, I have begged off of jobs. If I know there's in-house candidate, you don't put in as a professional courtesy, so, you know, I think that is a legitimate concern. But I at least wanted to make that suggestion to the board, what your initial reaction is. I could try to get both of them in, presuming the second candidate is still interested, and then you could meet them both and kind of decide next week. Or I at least wanted to put that card on the table, and then I will try to update the chief's plan on the search. I don't think it's going to be that different, quite honestly. We can use that same process. So I don't know if the board has an initial reaction.
My first question, it might be the only question, my first, my first question is, my first question is, can the work get done in two days a week? I mean, is that going to be adequate to get the work done, based on where we are today and where we have to get to in 90 days?
Yeah, I think most likely yes. By having somebody with over 30 years of experience, they're going to do what needs to get done. Are we going to be able to get a lot of extra work done? Absolutely not. But by having free cash done, by having the tax rate done, it's really just helping out with the budget, and we are starting the audit. So it will be, you know, coordinating with the auditors. Having somebody with that much experience, though, 31 years, I think, we're not going to be, we're not going to be accomplishing, we'll be accomplishing what we need to accomplish, I guess.
So then, what I would say, based on that, since we can get the work done, I think we need to cast a net and find the best candidate out there. So my, my suggestion would be is we, as long as this gentleman's up to snuff, if you will, or okay, we go with that plan, get through 90 days, and in the process, let's go, let's go find the next permanent finance director for the town.
Angelo?
I'm torn, quite frankly. But I'll go along with the group on this.
Julie?
Yeah, I think I agree with Peter on that, is, you know, is we can get the work done that we need to get done, and I do worry that if you have somebody in there, you know, that it does turn other people away.
It just, I should have brought this up, too. You know, Cape Cod is a, is a hard place to recruit people, and, you know, I, I think it was the town of Brewster, I mean, they put out and they got one or two people apply. So having somebody that has some interest, has some value to it, but I just, at least wanted to put all the cards on the table.
So the other risk is losing this other person.
Right.
By not, by picking a 30-day, we lose this other person.
Or maybe going already.
What, what kind of experiences this other person had?
The other person, again, didn't confirm, but have, has done a lot of municipal auditing, so has not necessarily been a municipal accountant, but a municipal auditor. From my initial meeting with the candidate, I don't think we would go wrong with either one, especially in the short term.
Any sense of whether or not the board wants to interview the two and then make a decision, or do we want to just go with the 30 and tell the other one if they want to apply? Because we're going to start the search process right away for the other one, anyway, so.
My druthers are to get the temporary in here and let's start the process.
Okay.
That's my druthers.
Julie?
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's the consensus. Okay.
I'll reach out and I'll ask him to, to come in and just meet with the board. On the, the next one, just the building commissioner position update, I realized that we had one quick discussion, and I just wanted to kind of bring the board up to date with where we are. Administration had initially presented to have the local inspector move up to the position of building commissioner with the auspices, that they have to meet the criteria that is required by the state. The individual in this case took the exams twice, apparently they're not easy exams, and did not pass them. So right now, I'm more concerned, we did do an extension as a local inspector. He has to pass a certain number to maintain his viability as a local inspector. He's come up on the year. We extended it out for six months to make sure that he stays on as a local inspector. He does have to pass that exam. But with, kind of giving him two bites of the apple and him not, not being successful, we did do a recruitment process. We did interview somebody, as a matter of fact, today. So we, and this is, again, this is kind of Cape Cod. We had five people that applied, and not all of them met the criteria to be eligible. So I think we had two or three that technically met the criteria. Sometimes you get people, though, that they, they go to a lot of different towns in a short amount of time or leave under questionable circumstances, so you don't necessarily want to bring somebody else's problem here, if you would. So we did interview the candidate that we thought made the most sense. So we, I actually will have discussions with him and see if he is interested in accepting the position. We just did the interview this afternoon, but we do have a candidate that I believe would be a, would do a good job in the position. So we're trying to secure that, and then we'll bring that in for the board's consideration for confirmation.
Thank you.
In light of the game, I keep my comments short.
Great. Selectman's Report, Angelo?
A while back, we had information about the new public records regulations and whatnot, and it's my understanding that generally the clerk becomes one of the people that deals with it, and that there could be other.
I mean, the board's clerk?
Town clerk, town clerk.
Thanks, Peter.
I didn't want to scare her, the town clerk. But it's also possible to have other people appointed to the.
That to you next week?
Yeah, we'll have a recommendation next week. Anything else, Angelo?
Julie?
Well, actually, this reminds me that probably a few weeks ago, I should have said that I attended the public records information meeting. It's a little belated, but.
Peter?
I have a list here, I just going to go through quickly, but just things I think we need to consider in the future. First one is, we decided to move forward in our whole goals and objectives process. I think we voted or decided, assuming we're going to update the act sign and register to include all the BOs objectives. By the way, some of them, I'm sure, have been completed by this point in time, so I'd like to suggest we do that. The other one has to do with, we had talked in previous years, if you will, about selectmen's compensation, and Angelo and I, as two retiring, Board of Selectmen have talked about the issue, and we plan to bring something forward. I would just like a discussion with the board as to whether we'd, they'd rather have us do that as a petition article, or we should do it as a board. So we just need to have that discussion on how to move forward, and we'll also need the wording on.
FinCom's doing a study, too.
Okay, well, something's going to go forward.
We can get the wording. We can get the motion, the article wording.
Okay.
We should be able to do that.
Yeah, I just don't want to miss out on the opportunity. And then, speaking of opportunity, I was talking to State Senator Benny DiMascio yesterday about the marijuana law, the thing that passed, and there is a provision where, as a town, you can opt out of it. Harwich did not vote in favor of that, if I remember correctly, the numbers, and what he told me, it takes the ballot question to do it. And the state, apparently, somewhat the state is working on the language, so everybody can have consistent language. We at least should talk about that at some point in time. The other one is, I think in January, we do another tour of the South Harwich Meeting House. They were supposed to be wrapping up their stuff kind of about this time. I've seen a lot of activity down there in the last couple of weeks, but we should get ourselves another tour in January. And then the other one is, in the last year, I've, every time I run into State Representative Sarah Peake, I invite her to come in and see us, and she hasn't. I'm not criticizing that, I'm just saying that we should, on an annual basis, at least have her come before us and tell us what's going on in the State House and how she could help things we're doing and whatnot.